Okay.
All right, motion made to postpone indefinitely amended to postpone for two meetings from now. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
He's not amending his second.
I'm not removing my second.
Oh, you're not removing it, okay. So that is to postpone indefinitely.
Call for the question.
All right, the original motion was to postpone indefinitely. It was a second by Mr. Berry. The initial motion was made by Mr. Raphael. There was discussion. Ms. Balance moved to amend it to the next meeting. It was negated by Mr. Raphael. She moved to move it to the second meeting. Mr. Raphael agreed to that one. Mr. Berry did not change his vote or his second, which throws it back to the original vote or the original motion.
No, 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 no. No, it doesn't.
Okay.
Excuse me, excuse me.
You had a motion on the table that was not withdrawn.
Excuse me?
You had a motion on the table that had not been withdrawn because Mr. Berry had not withdrawn a second.
We didn't ask to withdraw anything. I asked to amend it and Mr. Raphael seconded that. So the motion is amended. The motion and second and amended and second. So now we would vote on the amended motion and then if necessary, we would vote on the motion. Yes?
A second's never been withdrawn on an amended motion.
So in other words, the first motion stands whether the amended motion goes through or not.
The way I understand it, from what I believe Robert's rule says, the original motion can be amended one time. It can't be re-amended after the first time.
Oh, I don't know about that.
It can be amended multiple times.
It can be amended as many times as you want to.
And then you back up the latter.
No, you, no, you're, yeah. We're screwing up with motions.
Okay. Let's take a moment here to find it. Mr. Pownell?
Are you saying that our alderman across the table made two motions by saying next week, next meeting, and then changing it to the next meeting without a second?
Those are two separate motions.
So she could only make one motion, is what you're saying?
That's my understanding of what the rules say. I'm just bound to find it then.
There's still only one amendment to the motion regardless of what you just said, but I think you can amend them several times if you wish.
The first amendment failed.
A man.
Okay. I'm sort of not more up on this one, but I believe there's exactly one.
If a main motion might be more suitable or acceptable in altered form, a proposal to change its wording, either to clarify or within limits to modify the meaning before the main motion is voted on can be introduced by moving to amend.
How many times?
Don't think it says.
I don't understand all the little squigglies, but on the Robert rule of order motion chart, squiggle eleven, for lack of a better word, kill a main motion, you say I move the motion, be postponed indefinitely. I think that's, would that be the same for the item being postponed indefinitely? Needs a second, it can debate it, it cannot be amended and it has to pass with a majority vote.
On the original amendment, is that correct?
On the original motion.
On the original motion.
Okay.
That's because of the nature of the motion, is what he's reading. Because of the indefinite.
Okay.
So that takes us back to the original motion?
That would take us back to the original motion and not allow amendment to it.
I don't think, I don't agree with that.
Still in discussion then, if we have a motion, a second?
Yes, we are still in this. That's where we were when.
I objected to the indefinitely because we tend to lose sight of items that have been brought to the table. It either needs to be deleted from the agenda or postponed indefinitely with the, I don't want to say caveat, if it's allowable to be carried under unfinished business until it's brought back to the table, just so memory serves everyone.
We still have to vote on the original motion.
No, I'm just discussing as far as I would, my original concern with the indefinitely.
Yeah.
Because we've been told in the past that indefinitely for items on the agenda could not be done.
So when we're, when I'm trying to amend, I'm sort of trying to discuss. And so if I've moved to amend once and that doesn't get a second or it's declined by the person who made the original motion, well then, there's nothing to say, I couldn't try to amend it again and again and again and again. There's nothing that says, like, I can't do that. And that, you know, it could be time consuming and it could never ever get amended, but we now have a main motion and a second and we have an amendment to the motion and a second. So the way to do that is work back through. You vote on the amended motion first and it either passes or it doesn't. If it doesn't pass, then you vote on the main motion.
With a general motion, that would be the rule. But with what Mr. Pownell read you a moment ago, in regard to a motion to postpone indefinitely, you don't have the ability to amend that main motion, is what he just read. And that, and we'd have to refer to the section he's looking at, his squiggly is a section.
Squiggly eleven, section eleven.
And once that particular motion is voted on, depending on how that vote goes, then an opportunity.
Then there would be an opportunity to make a different motion.
Yeah. To amend the original motion is what I understand.
But right now, if he doesn't withdraw his second, you're trapped.
Okay.
Voting.
All right. I understand now, thank you.
On the original motion.
Okay.
So the original motion was to postpone indefinitely and Mr. Berry seconded.
Yes. So that's the one we take the vote on, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Need for a discussion? All right, the vote, let's do a real call going on this, since it's controversial.
Ms. Balance?
No.
Mr. Pownell?
No.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Yes, it's two noes. So it's in limbo. Oh, it just didn't pass.
It didn't pass.
Two, two would not pass under a majority rule.
Ms. Balance?
I would move to postpone this item of business until two meetings from now.
Motion made postpone two meetings from now, is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, need for a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In a post?
No.
Mr. Parker, what you vote?
Yes.
So we have three yeses, one no?
Back to me.
To you.
Yes, we'll postpone every two.
So it's eight, two.
What would be the date on that, please? Date on that, the fifteen?
Can't even keep up with that one. All right. Under new business, number one, multifamily drilling.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could I make a, an amendment to the agenda and ask that we move Mr. Brown up to number one in the new business since he does have to drive back to Fayetteville?
Do you want to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules and.
Does Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown wish to be moved? Okay. All right. So you wish to withdraw your motion?
Just stays for a second.
No, I think he said he would love to be moved up.
I would love to be first on the.
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Made and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
You need a roll call?
Roll call.
Okay. All right, roll call this time. Back to here. Mr. Brown didn't express that to the chair that he wanted to be moved to the first part.
I was excited what was.
Otherwise, we would have done so, sir. Thank you. You have the floor, sir.
We'll do a moment.
We still have to vote.
Roll call.
All to move, okay, yeah.
Oh, which one was this? Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Pownell?
Yes.
Four, zero.
All right. So move. Mr. Brown, you have the floor, sir. I guess we actually need a motion to discuss.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Made and seconded, now, sir, you have the floor. Uh, let's come on.
Move this out of the way.
But Nick, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself? I don't, I don't know that the council knows.
Thanks to you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for allowing me the opportunity this evening. I'm Nick Brown. I'm the president of Climate Energy Environment Group, a consulting group in Fayetteville. We consult on energy matters primarily and a number of greenhouse gas emissions inventory, inventories in and around northwest Arkansas. I'm working with the city of Little Rock and others as well. We, our contract with the city is through the Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant Program. We have two deliverables and we've completed one. I'm here to give you a brief summary of the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, which has been completed. The climate action plan will build on that and will suggest solutions and means for reducing, eliminating, and offsetting the greenhouse gas emissions that we've identified as the city desires. Back in October of '07, then Mayor Joy signed the U.S. Mayors Climate Protection Agreement. You see there are the three commitments that all cities that have signed that commitment, and there are about 800 cities nationwide now that have participated in the U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement. The city agreed to reduce greenhouse gas emissions seven percent below the 1990 emissions level. The other two agreements were to enact policies, in essence, to urge the state government and other city governments to also come on board with this and to urge Congress to pass greenhouse gas emissions legislation. As I mentioned, last year, the city was awarded an Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant. There were four major activities under that. Solar hot water will be installed sometime within the next few weeks up at the trolley barn on top of the hill, trolley wash. Bruce mentioned earlier that it will have LED lighting in Basin Park and in other public fixtures around the city. We'll install energy efficiency upgrades to the auditorium. That will include upgraded windows, HVAC improvements, and those kinds of things. Mr. Matt's in charge of that piece of the project. Our piece of the puzzle was to do the greenhouse gas emissions inventory and to create a climate action plan. I'll tell you briefly what that is as we go through this presentation. Well, the greenhouse gas emissions inventory really is something that we need before we can do anything else. We need to know exactly where we stand from the viewpoint of emissions that have been created by the city and in the activities within it. Cities across the U.S. have carried out these inventories. The city of Eureka Springs is the first in the state to have completed two inventories and they're paired. We did one that was an inventory of the emissions that are related to municipal operations and secondly, an inventory of all the emissions created citywide. We chose the city limits themselves as the limits for our study. It's a little bit arbitrary. You could argue that emissions from Holiday Island are in the scope and scale of Eureka Springs. You could argue a lot of things about some radius around that within Carroll County, but we simply decided that it was efficient and doable to use the city limits of Eureka Springs. Everything is based on the Greenhouse Gas Protocol Initiative, which is a, an internationally recognized protocol. World Resources Institute, which is what I call a bingo, a big international non-government organization in Washington, was half of that. The World Council for Business, World Business Council for Sustainable Development was the other half. As a partnership, they developed a protocol which became then the conceptual basis for systems of accounting, one of which is the one that we're using. Clean Air Cool Planet is the name of the prevailing system that's frequently used. University of Arkansas has used Clean Air Cool Planet. City of Fayetteville has used Clean Air Cool Planet. And that's been the basis for what we did. We modified this procedure ourselves so that it would really fit with the data collection needs that we have and the kinds of emissions and the kinds of data that we found in Eureka Springs. You can see there are a number of protocols that are out there that are based on the Greenhouse Gas Protocol Initiative. And we looked at that and have sort of tailor-made what we think is the best approach for Eureka Springs. As I mentioned, there are two inventories that are really separate inventories and they were bundled together under this effort. The first one was municipal operations. I'll tell you the components of that in just a moment. And then of all of the emissions produced by residents, commercial activities, the few industrial activities that we do have, and it also included the municipal activities. So fundamentally, all of the emissions, mostly from energy source, energy-using sources, a few of them from things like refrigerants and fertilizers and those kinds of things. Our data collection effort took five or six months. We got utility records from the city, also from utilities themselves for the community-wide data, from the gas company, our two electric companies, the city's water use, which we will report out on with the climate action plan, but haven't reported out on a whole lot with our emissions inventory. We use census data for housing and for commuters, for other transportation uses. We looked at fuel records for fleet use for the city. You use bulk fuel, you use some credit cards, some individual travel, those kinds of things. We look for records of refrigerant uses, fertilizers, even paper, creates greenhouse gas emissions as it begins to decay, and then, of course, the solid waste and recycling data. We don't include everything because you just have to draw lines and decide what's really important and what's not. So the things that were included in both of them were all the stationary combustion. For us, that's really pretty much natural gas. It didn't seem practical to try to figure out exactly how many wood stoves there are in Eureka Springs. And so there are small fractions like that that we felt like we just had to exclude. Fleet fuels, refrigerants, and chemicals, fertilizers, you can see the list on the left, I won't read through them all. All of that was included in both of the inventory. The bottom, local ground travel by tourists, for example, is important. And we looked at other cities and other studies, other inventories, and we concluded that tourists travel about half as much as all of the rest of us do here in Eureka Springs. So if you took all of the tourists out, we'd have about two-thirds as much emissions from gasoline and diesel fuel uses. The bottom line of this is TND, that's transmission and distribution losses. That suggests that all of the electricity that comes from the Gentry coal-fired plant over in Washington County or from northeast in Oklahoma, other plants, we end up having a liability of about eight percent more emissions, really and truly, from, for getting electricity from those plants to the city of Eureka Springs than would be reflected if we only counted what was in the coal that was burned for our electricity per se. So transmission, distribution losses are included in a comprehensive effort. We did not assign any values at all to air travel by tourists. We made the assumption that most of the tourists that come to Eureka Springs are either going to Branson or Rogers or Walmart or Fayetteville or somewhere like that. So you can argue differently, I'm simply telling you what our assumptions were. Similarly, we didn't try to identify where people went on their initial foray so that if they flew into XNA, we didn't count the mileage from XNA to Eureka Springs and back. It just didn't seem practical for us to figure out what that was with any certainty at all. We could have added a number there and I could have told you then that it was a 50 or 60 percent accurate number. And so I just decided not to include that at all. There's almost no agricultural activity in town. I suppose you could argue there are some pets that do add some methane, but we did not include that. We didn't include energy embodied in consumer supplies, durable goods, food, construction materials. These are called life cycle emissions, and I'll talk a little bit more about them in a minute. But this study, as almost all of the inventories do and is the Greenhouse Gas Protocol Initiative requires, includes only what we call non-life cycle emissions. I'll explain that very briefly in a moment. So fundamentally, when you do these kinds of things, you would like to think that you really get data from everything. And in fact, we got a lot of great data. The mayor and the directors of the city were really terrific at getting us lots of bills, lots of really good, hard data. It was comprehensive. We got really good data for 2010 for just about everything, in particular for municipal operations. We had to do some modeling, in fact, so that, for example, with the tourist travel, we couldn't really figure out how many gallons of gasoline they used. So we had to look at other studies and say, a reasonable person would conclude that our tourism patterns are similar to some of those in Utah and Colorado, that are other very small tourist towns that have seasonal traffic. And then, of course, even when that fails, you have to talk to people and assume what things are. It was kind of fun, but also it's kind of reality. Reality's a little bit messy. So when I'm trying to figure out what our emissions are related to refrigerant use, for example, you only count what the recharge is, what's called fugitive emissions. And so I had to call the vendors who service the buildings that the city owns and operates and say, about how much did you do in recharge in 2010? How many times did you go out and how many pounds did you put in? So sometimes you do just have to ask people and get some general ideas. And I don't really have bills for that and I don't really know if I got every single building, but at some point, you ask experts what the general idea is. When I was asking them about refrigerants for the whole city of Eureka Springs, I did the same kind of thing. How many, how many firms service the city of Eureka Springs for air conditioners? And about how much business did you buy, for example? So there's some modeling going on, some professional estimation. Well, a good inventory is all of these things. Again, I won't go into all the detail that we could this evening. I will send a PDF of this to the city hall and I hope then it can be posted somewhere on your website and you can have that. You can also feel free to email me for these local details. But I just want to emphasize to you that we think very carefully about the characteristics and the qualities that a good, comprehensive, and professional inventory ought to have. Pursuit to the Greenhouse Gas Protocol Initiative, you have scope one, two, and three, and so it's divided into three sections. The first section is the things that we burn on site, that we're directly responsible for. Things that burn for us are really natural gas and fleet fuels, for the most part. We use very little bit of fertilizer, not very much in terms of refrigerants, even though there's a big multiplier for that. Mainly, we're talking about gasoline, diesel, natural gas. Scope two is electricity, which is all purchased electricity, still on site, but it's indirect because it's burned somewhere else. And then scope three is what we call all the other stuff. Most of that really doesn't occur on site. So if you fly from here to St. Louis or Denver on city business, that really should go on the city's inventory. If you're a resident and you fly around, that actually goes on the community inventory. That's relevant to what the total energy use for our city is. So our personal habits count whether those emissions were all created right here in the city of Eureka Springs or not. Solid waste is really a big deal for us because if you don't have a means for recovering methane from your landfill, it creates a considerable amount of emissions, about a half ton of CO2 equivalent for every ton of solid waste. And even small towns create lots of tons of solid waste, as we're going to see in just a minute. Administratively, these are the sources that we looked at and included. I want to point out in particular the school district, which we included. And the school district, you won't be surprised to know, used about as much energy as the rest of all the city ops. It's just about all the rest of municipal ops. It's a big deal with lots of buildings and a pretty good-sized fleet. This results in Eureka's inventory looking bigger than a lot of other cities because they don't all declare exactly, they're not as transparent as I'm trying to be with you guys, and they don't declare exactly what they do and don't include. The Greenhouse Gas Protocol Initiative doesn't say you have to include these things, but you don't have to include those things. I suspect that very few of these efforts have included school districts and our inventory consequently looks two or three times larger per person, the municipal ops side does, than a lot of the other inventories. And I think it's because we included the school district. Well, here's our summary of the findings and we'll go over this a little bit more at a time when we're kind of not in the middle of a business meeting. I'll come back here one week from tonight and have a hearing in this room in which I hope we'll have input from maybe perhaps some of you, but certainly other citizens who are aware of our efforts as well. Bottom line of this is we've got about 5,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent is the unit here. CO2 equivalent, in our case, being almost all CO2. It's almost all carbon dioxide. We have a little bit of methane from wastewater, we have a little bit of methane from paper, a little bit of methane from solid waste and from fertilizers and refrigerants, but for the most part, when we talk about CO2 equivalent, it is carbon dioxide. That's really our big-ticket item here. And you can see that purchased electricity, the electricity that we used in municipal buildings primarily, accounts for about half of it. And then that's also the street lighting for the city. By contrast, the city of Fayetteville's inventory a couple of years ago was about 40,000 tons, metric tons of CO2 equivalent per year just for their municipal operations. So we're a little bit higher than they are per capita and I suspect that's because as a city of 2,000, you really don't have much economy of scale of anything. You still have to have a city hall, you still have to have a police department, you still have to have a fire department, all of the city services. It's expressed another way here. It looks like electricity is about 40% of our total. Natural gas, fleet fuels is in the blue here and that's about 20%. Most of what you see in the green section of this is solid waste and local travel, and I'll show you those numbers later. So the community inventory was the other piece of it. That's all the gas and electricity used everywhere in the city, all of the car and truck transportation everywhere, commuting by everyone who lives in Cedar Township. So here we went to sort of a modeling effort because we had to use U.S. Census data, which doesn't tell us what's happening in Eureka Springs, but it will tell us what's happening in Cedar Township.
What's Cedar Township?
Cedar Township. That's, that's, Eureka Springs is in Cedar Township and then there's a little bit of Cedar Township that surrounds Eureka Springs in Carroll County, but a whole lot. The county is, consists of, I think, eight or nine townships. And so basically for us in Arkansas, these are census reporting units. We don't think or talk about townships. We don't have legal and administrative units that support townships per se. They're pretty much U.S. Census administrative units. And it's fair to say, if you looked on a map, and I'll bring a map next Tuesday, next Thursday, because it hadn't occurred to me that the people who are here might not even really know where Cedar Township is. But it's about twice as big as the city and the city is wholly contained within it. And so it's reasonable to think that the people who commute to and from Cedar Township are related to Eureka Springs commerce and enterprise. Car travel by tourists, again, is about one-third of the total car travel. Solid, and the U.S. Census tells us how many vehicle miles are traveled in Cedar Township, for example. We can multiply that out by fleet averages and then by emissions factors. And so we know approximately what we've used from the standpoint of mobile sources. And then fugitive. And then fugitive refrigerants and fertilizers. So from the community standpoint, it looks like about 40,000 tons total. I mentioned that's about the municipal ops in Fayetteville. I'd also point out that University of Arkansas's inventory is around 160,000 tons. So actually, we're not doing too badly here. We're only about one quarter as much as the UA main campus itself, and this is sort of put graphically. Here's an interesting one. The global averages is in the middle there. Global average emissions is about four metric tons of CO2 equivalent. Eureka Springs really comes out looking OK here. We're just at 19 tons per capita, per person. That's very close and slightly under the national average, up there with Canada and the U.S. So you can look at all of these other ones. I think this was just kind of interesting, not perhaps very, very meaningful, but in fact, we are right near the national average. I think this is a good thing, considering how much our people really drive. I found about seven or eight other studies that other consultants in cities had done for their community activities, and we're on the low to middle end comparative to the others. Park City, in fact, did include a lot of air travel from skiers flying in and out. It's a ski town. Creve Coeur, I don't really know exactly why. Creve Coeur, Missouri seemed to be so much higher than others. It's just hard for me to explain that, but we looked pretty good on this one. I want to point out a couple of things briefly, and then I'll conclude. The things that we count are in blue. So this was actually a study done in Berkeley, California, and what they looked at, they said, if you count the emissions that you have to count under the protocol, you're really counting the energy uses that are onsite and then all of those other things that I mentioned, but you're not counting any of the energy that's embodied in food, which is considerable, in expendable items that we all use every day, in all the durable goods that come into our community that we demand and purchase and use and dispose of, or the construction materials, whether they're local or imported, either one. So we're not counting any of those things. And if you did count those things, our inventory would be something in the range of 100,000 tons instead of 40,000 tons. So in essence, as we count the sorts of things that everyone is counting now, we're only counting about 40% of what our real impact is. This will sort of be a philosophical and political question for us as we start looking at the Climate Action Plan, because we'll want to know whether ethically we have an obligation to displace and offset and get rid of 100,000 tons or only 40,000 tons. So these are the categories that we can work on to reduce displacement offset this 40,000 tons or the 100,000 tons, whatever it is. So you can see now that we've got the numbers. We know where Eureka Springs stands from an emissions standpoint, and now the work is to try to figure out what kinds of activities can we, should we pursue over the next 10, 20, 40 years to go from where we are toward climate neutrality? What will we do? What mix of conservation and efficiency of renewable energy systems, of sequestration, and other kinds of activities will we work on, will we commit to? So these are the things that we'll be talking about next week, as I ask citizens to give me input on what kinds of things you view as most practical. And we know what some of those things could be. It'll be a mix of policies, of applications, and of financial instruments. An energy efficiency code, for example, we can do locally. The state can do that for us as well. And sometimes we do it first, and we encourage the state to. The state of California did it, and that's encouraged the United States to do some things. So some things we might do because we know we should do it. Property assessed conservation and efficiency, to me, is a no-brainer. It's the kind of thing where it can provide resources for families to do energy efficiency in their homes on the front end without having a need for cash upfront. You pay for the work through energy savings in the home, and that's the kind of thing that the city could do, the state could do. The feds are talking about this now. So I won't go through all of these now, except to say, I encourage you. I hope you will start thinking about the kinds of things that you would like to see Eureka Springs include in our Climate Action Plan. Secondly, I'll prepare a Climate Action Plan based on the input that I receive. It won't be a one-off, so I'll be here next Thursday, but we'll have about a six-week public input period, and I'd be happy to accept input in a number of different forms, through email, by telephone. I'll come back here a couple of times. We'll have meetings. You'll have plenty of opportunities to do that. But the other thing is, the council will want to consider, and the mayor, whether this is just a report from a consultant or whether you want to work on it closely enough with us and whether you want to endorse this as a city council and say, this is a plan that we'll stand behind as a city council, and it's the city's plan. It could be a consultant's plan, if that's what you want it to be, and it'll have some use, and it'll be sort of a blueprint. And it can be something that the city would commit to. The city has already committed, through the mayor's commitment several years back, to the reduction that's called for under the U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement. And we have another opportunity now to see if the council wants to integrate into the process of building the Climate Action Plan and endorse it, or work with it, or work with me from the standpoint of we would endorse it if some other things were different or not. It's not something that I want to drive so hard that I would say, I just think this is right, so take it or leave it. This is something you'll have an opportunity to participate in as much or as little, I think, as you choose to as a council. And I appreciate your time. I really do. I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
What time is your meeting?
It will be next week at 7:00 p.m. in this room, next Thursday.
Thank you.
Will you send us out of notice and remind us?
Sure.
Do we have time for questions there? Or do you want...
Council's here. You might as well take advantage of it.
One of the first things that popped into my head, of course, I try, and I know several of us probably do try to do our part as much as we can, as far as this sort of thing, but one thing is, our historic district has been maybe sometimes somewhat resistant to solar panels and different things like that. And so would you be able to help us find ways to encourage and enable the historic district to be able to allow more things that are energy-saving?
I think that's a really, really important challenge for us. I think we might end up with district energy system, for example, downtown. So you might have district steam and chill water throughout the downtown area. That may be one way that we could have more efficient heating and cooling in the future. We might have solar arrays that do the 21st century work but don't compromise our 19th century charm on rooftops and other places. And it's a political question as much as a technical one. I'm happy to have that discussion. It's the people of Eureka Springs who will really ultimately have the decision. And we're kind of up against that right this moment with respect to windows next door in the auditorium.
Another thing I wondered about was, I know we lose a lot of water through our water pipes that are disintegrating and not in good condition. Would you be able to help us move in a healthy direction in that respect? Is that within your purview at all?
Well, it is from the standpoint that I just sort of kept my eye on the ball and found a grand opportunity for energy efficiency. I'd love to work with you also on an infrastructure, public works, infrastructure funding project. I don't have one in mind, but you can...You guys know as well as anyone that if your city's going to prosper and grow over the next century, you're going to have to have an updated system at some point. So you need a long-term strategy for getting that in place a little at a time. There's never going to be a time when you're going to have $100 million to issue that.
So that might be something you could help us work with, too, yes?
That's right.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? What's going on?
Just a point of clarification on the municipal operations paper versus the community.
Yes.
What was the paper inventory related to?
That's mostly office paper use. So office paper, because it is a short-lived product, when it decays, it creates mostly CO2, a little bit of methane, but as it degrades, it's an organic material, and so it causes greenhouse gas emissions when it decays.
So then as far as the community number being so high, is there anything else included in that way?
Oh, I'm sorry. The community, then, that's all of the paper that, based on national averages. So here's where we get some modeling. And we could get a finer resolution if we had a little bit more time and effort to do it, but we use national averages for paper use, and we worked under the assumption that Eureka Springs is a reasonably average town in that regard. So that's the amount of office paper and general use paper that 2,000, 2,050 of us use.
Like the schools.
The schools.
What about recycling?
Recycling, we actually look pretty good from the standpoint of diversion rate compared to the state average and the national average. And of course, recycling does reduce the amount of material that goes to municipal waste disposal, you know, to the landfills. The landfills, it's a shame, but if you don't have an energy recovery system in your landfill, it creates quite a bit of emissions. Now, Waste Management just put in a five-megawatt power generating system in their landfill in Pontetown, and they're generating something like 40 million kilowatt-hours a year from that. And that, I would argue, is one way, one approach, to reducing your overall emissions in some way and saving some money in the process, I think.
Since that's one of the higher municipal...Since that number's based on the citizenry, even though it's transported outside of the city limits?
That's right. That's the amount that we think, well, that they have recorded came from Eureka Springs.
It doesn't take into account tourists.
No, that's right.
Just the static population.
That's right.
Is there a fee associated with your services?
Sorry, is there what?
Is there a fee associated with your services that is charged to the city?
This one came from the Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant Program. So yes, I'm working under contract, and I'm about half through it now. So the two major products that I have are the inventory and the Climate Action Plan.
OK, is that assessed to the city or assessed...
To the grant.
To your...to the grant?
To the grant.
To the grant.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, city's not out penny.
State or federal?
Other than the paper we have to fax to you or send you.
That's all right. Actually, the city got about 250,000...
Electricity, and you can...
Is that from the state or the federal government?
I just like the time of meetings as I reduce the...
Well, if we'd shut up, some would sure would help.
That's...That is federal. That was federal money, really, it's there, that came through the Arkansas Department of Energy.
OK. Thank you.
Or the Arkansas Energy Office.
Any further questions from Nick? Nick, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and hope you guys can make it next week as well.
OK.
I'll sure try.
OK. Mr. Levine has asked that number six, since he's been here for the duration, be moved up to the next item through a second. A motion to discuss at second? So he can go home? On the moratorium on capital improvements in city parks.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Yes, I'll move that.
Spin the rules.
Move, spin the rules and place item number six next.
OK. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
OK. Any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Wait a minute. Please. Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Pennell?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Made and seconded. Discussion's open. You all want to go ahead and start a discussion? You want him to go ahead and give? Do you have any comments to make? OK.
Since my co-sponsor is not available tonight, and I believe he probably wants to talk about this a little bit, I would move to postpone this until our next meeting.
Motion made to postpone till next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Three to one. It's just the majority, yes. We'll postpone the next meeting. All right. So we'll go back. Yes, you can bail now. All right, next on the item is number two, date for mid-year budget review.
Wait, wait. How about multifamily dwellings?
Oh, OK. Geez, I thought, see, I'm getting punchy now. Number one, multifamily dwellings, appendix ordinance, planning postponed from July the 2nd. Seventh meeting, motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 OK.
What do we need to do on this? Did we ask you last time to...Very good. Thank you.
Say a motion.
I haven't seen that yet.
Slight changes by Madam Clerk.
Would you grab him? We still have your screen.
Come back.
Don't go hit him.
I put it in your mailbox.
Oops. Thanks, ma'am.
And then there's a list with 13...
I'll just talk to him if I have to.
That was actually Mr. Lessweek's observation.
It's the first time before we can discuss. Do we make a motion to sign this a number and put it on the first reading?
Motion made and seconded to sign the number. Approve on first reading. Is that correct? Is that your motion?
Put it on the first reading.
Put it on the first reading.
We haven't voted on it yet.
Who is the second?
I was.
Thank you.
This require a real call vote when it comes time?
No.
OK, just handle, OK.
I think we decided that, like, for the last reading and resolutions. Resolutions are like the last readings of ordinances.
I have enough time to change it.
Yeah. I haven't even read this yet, but I guess we'll talk about it, and then, since it'll take more than one time through.
The number?
Don't we need to vote?
We do.
Whether we're going to sign a number?
Yeah. Yeah. Let's wait for you to... Okay, let's wait for any further discussion. All right, all in favor of signing your number and read by?
Well...
Aye.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The number will be 2142. Ordinance number 2142, an ordinance clarifying the qualifying legally non-conforming multifamily dwellings in R1 zoning as of the passing of this ordinance. Whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs has determined that there needs to be a list of legally non-conforming multifamily dwellings in R1 for future proper code and zoning enforcement, now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City Council in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, the attached list of property shall henceforth be included as Appendix C to Title 14 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code Title. Section two, Appendix C to Title 14 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code Title is hereby established as a complete list of properties with legally non-conforming multifamily dwellings in R1 at this time as a result of the previous passage of ordinance 1816 and operation of law. Section three, that should any of these properties lose their status by operation of law in the future, that property or property shall be removed from Appendix C to Title 14 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code. Section four, all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Any further on this one? I know we've got a Ms. Balance.
I've been contacted by some citizens who have a little issue with this list. In particular, the very first one on this list. According to some of the neighbors, if I understand correctly, that property was revised from, I'm not sure if it was a single dwelling or maybe a duplex. And now it has at least three or maybe more and maybe even a travel trailer sitting out front that they think is occupied by at least one or maybe more people at any given time. So they were real concerned that...They don't think this belongs on this list at all. In fact, they don't think it's gone through what it should have gone through to be what it is right now. So that's an issue that I hope we'll get a chance to look at. I'll talk to these people again and see if they can make it a little clearer to me so I understand better and I can bring it back to you what their concern is exactly. But there is a concern there. So I wanted to let you know about that.
Any further? Mr. Poundell?
Some of the concerns that I have, and it's also been expressed to me...